I have a question. We're saying thirty-seven. How many massage places do we have? Because that's a lot of.
Chief, would, do you have any information?
If I could just add a little perspective so that everybody be on the same page. Councilman, I don't have the exact number right now, but if I could just kind of take a moment to tell us historically about what happens. The police, we get together, we, you guys have heard me brag many times, we have great relationships with the other agencies in our area. Sergeant Gio Varci Mitchell is embedded with the HSI. He works with the DEA. He works with DPS to go and run criminal operations on some of these parlors. The problem is, they're so well-known that there were a couple of them that had a picture of Gio inside, so that they know what to look for. And so, a lot of this information that we're getting from these nonprofit organizations are things that they're going on a website, and what they're doing is they're getting this information because a customer's going in and leaving a review. Well, that's how they're being identified as doing that, but that's different than for me to be able to go in and get probable causes and put them in jail.
Right.
So what we're doing is we're in the process of evolving our response. We are now not only focused, as the Midland Police Department, on developing our relationships with our friends that wear badges, but also with Alicia Crowley, like with the Attorney General's Office that you introduced me to, and with Art, with the TDLR. And so, we're, what we're doing is we're going to make a bigger concerted effort where we're pulling in parts from a bunch of different agencies, whether they wear badges or not, so that we can have a more holistic approach to this. So, we might have some parlors that are identified, but getting us inside to get the probable cause to take that enforcement action is not just necessarily an A plus B equals C type of venture. So we're in the process of evolving, because trust me, we want to put these illegal businesses down too. I hope that perspective helps you. Are there any questions that maybe I could answer? What's answer?
Said bring down the hammer.
Yes, sir.
Hey, guys. This is Andre, Horizon City News, and as many of you know by now, I am currently in Midland, Texas. Kind of a long story why I'm here, like many things in life, but here I am. And I plan on being here for a while, so I've decided to start covering various news topics in my local area here in Midland, Texas. And I want to turn all you guys' attention to this new ordinance that the Midland Texas City Council is passing. I think it's already passed. Yeah, yeah, I believe it's already passed. But anyway, it's from late last month, on March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, that the Midland Texas City Council, they passed this new ordinance which beefs up the regulation and enforcement of massage parlors, massage establishments, which apparently, I'm finding out now, is actually regulated by state law. It's actually just a specific set of state laws that deal specifically with any establishment, business establishment that specifically does massaging. So you have to get licenses and stuff to have a massage parlor, which I didn't know until I watched this video, but it's a lot more regulated than I realized. Anyway, these massage parlors apparently throughout the state of Texas and throughout the nation are a breeding ground for prostitution and crime and human trafficking. So the city of Midland, Texas is trying to crack down on any bad, bad players that are involved in the massage establishment business, and they're trying to prevent any new bad actors from coming into the picture. And I understand where they're coming from, but my first thought was, it sounds like they're trying to create their own in-house search warrant, you know, just a general warrant to go and inspect various massage parlors throughout the city. Because obviously, all of these laws are well-intentioned, but sometimes the law enforcement and the local governments, or any government, can start abusing their power and things get out of hand when they decide that they need to start searching and seizing stuff. So, that's the first thing that came to my mind is that, you know, if all these ordinances they're passing regarding the massage parlors, no matter how well-intentioned they might be, is if they actually pass muster and fall in line with the laws of the state of Texas and the federal constitution. But that's just something I was thinking of just in the back of my mind. And also, maybe the Fifth Amendment will be covered too for the takings clause, but I'm not sure about that. But I could look into it later. So, yeah, anyway, this is the Midland Texas City Council. They are, like I said, passing a new ordinance regarding massage parlor establishments. And like I said, it's, there's a, it's a breeding ground in many areas for prostitution and crime, organized crime especially, and human trafficking. So, that's why they're passing this ordinance, and you guys can watch the video and tell me what you think. I also found this quick video, which we'll watch in just a second here after I stop speaking, which is a massage parlor in East Texas, in League City, Texas, near Galveston and Houston. And it's the exact situation I just discussed and what this video is going to be about, is that it's a massage establishment that's in League City, Texas, in the Galveston-Houston metro area, on the east side of Texas. And it was recently busted by law enforcement for human trafficking, prostitution, that type of thing. So, here's the video of that in East Texas. It happened just two weeks ago, last month in March twenty-twenty-five. It'll give you an idea of what I'm talking about here regarding these these massage establishments that are involved in crime and prostitution and that sort of thing. Of course, prostitution is a crime, so it's all crime, whether it's prostitution or money laundering, whatever it is. But anyway, here's the video of what happened in Galveston, and then the rest of the video is going to be the Midland Texas City Council discussing these issues and passing their ordinance to regulate massage establishments within the city of Midland, Texas. All right, guys. Thanks for watching Horizon City News. All my contact information is down below in the description box, and I'll try to add some relevant information in the description box for anybody to, you know, just get some background information and just some brief research on the topic. And if you want to reach out to me, you can put a, you know, a message in the comment section, or you can email me or text me. My email and phone number is down in the description box. All right. Thanks for watching Horizon City News, guys. I'll be in touch. And here's the topic of massage establishments in the state of Texas.
Right now, we are following breaking news out of Galveston County. The sheriff's office telling us it raided two illegal massage parlors suspected of being involved in human trafficking. KPRC Two reporter Bryce Newberry joins us live with more. Bryce?
Hey, Zach. Good afternoon to you. Yes, and federal agents are still here on the scene behind me after the raid of this massage business over the last several hours. Stepping out of the way, just so you can see, this Royal Thai Massage here, we're off of Main Street in League City. And you can see, I mean, the neon open signs are still lit up right now, just indicating the nature of this raid happening when business was open earlier today. We do have some video that shows just the big law enforcement response that, to this scene. We saw agents from the FBI, as well as Homeland Security Investigations out here. There were also investigators from the Galveston County District Attorney's Office, and of course, the sheriff's office, all part of this joint effort to take, to raid this massage business, as well as another one this afternoon. According to the Galveston County Sheriff's Office, they believe that this massage business was facilitating some human trafficking. At this point, we do not have an estimate as to how many victims of human trafficking may have been recovered during this operation. But according to the sheriff's office, the evidence revealed that these businesses were operating as fronts for prostitution-related activities. So they did arrest a fifty-seven-year-old woman. She's now charged with aggravated promotion of prostitution. And really, we could see from that video again, when the investigation was going on earlier, as they conducted these search warrants, they, there were bags of evidence that got loaded up into the back of some vehicles and then hauled out of here after the arrest, again, of that fifty-seven-year-old woman. At this point, it's not clear if anyone else could face charges, but the detectives say that this investigation is ongoing, and that's certainly a possibility. We're live in League City. I'm Bryce Newberry, KPRC Two News.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, then we'll look for action from council on item twenty-one. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item twenty-two, please.
An ordinance granting Title Five business regulations of the city of Midland, Texas by adding Chapter Thirteen Massage Establishments so as to establish certain requirements that must be satisfied to operate a business that advertises or offers massage therapy or other massage services, contain a cumulative clause, contain a savings and severability clause, provide for a maximum fine or penalty of $2,000, establishing an effective date that shall be thirty days after the date of adoption of this ordinance and ordering publication.
Thank you. And on this item, we haven't talked about this very much publicly, but this is something that I've been working on pretty diligently in the background with several different folks, and this is an issue that's been raised. We have a proliferation of illicit massage parlors in Midland, more than thirty of them that are documented. And so, we have some nonprofits here in our community that we've been working with, along with local law enforcement, state law enforcement, even the Attorney General's Office at the state level has been much engaged in this. And so, I want to say thank you to our staff, to our legal team, and to staff who've put some things in place to allow us to be more effective in addressing these issues. We want our community to be aware of the fact that we have an illicit massage parlor problem in our community and that we're working to address that. The fact that there's more than thirty in our community, I think, is deeply concerning to all of us and should be to our community at large. So with that, Elizabeth, I want to invite you to make any comments that you have also.
Sure. So illicit massage businesses, as they're commonly referred to, are an issue. They're an issue across Texas and likely across the United States. And so, a lot of communities in Texas are dealing with the same issue. There's not a one-size-fits-all way to address these things. Up until now, the police department has really been taking the lead on this, working it from a law enforcement perspective. And so, our legal team has helped us look at other ways that we can support those law enforcement efforts and have a little bit more oversight on those businesses that we know have a history of illicit behavior, whether that's in the form of prostitution, sex trafficking, or other similar organized criminal-type activity. And I know we've spoken a lot in the past about how we can better use code enforcement to support some of those law enforcement efforts. This ordinance, before you all, is one tool that will allow us to help and augment those efforts that our police department is taking on. So again, it's an ordinance, very much ties to goal two, set the standard for a safe and secure city, and specifically to these two strategies under that goal. The purpose of this ordinance, just on a very high level, amends Title Five of our city code, which is specific to business regulations, and it adds a licensing requirement to a certain subset of massage establishments. So I want to be really clear about that. This does not apply to all massage establishments. It is only to those massage establishments that have a history of criminal activity, and that's very specifically defined in the ordinance, which I'll get into in the next slides. But I just want to make that very clear, that there are lawful massage therapy businesses in our community, and the intent here is not to more, to regulate them more, but to look out for those businesses that have a history of criminal activity that are not lawful. The goal in the end, again, is just to enhance regulatory oversight and augment the current law enforcement efforts by putting this ordinance into place, and then also, more importantly, to disrupt the criminal activity that's occurring at these businesses. So, as I mentioned before, the ordinance only applies to a subset of massage establishments, and those are those establishments that have a history of criminal activity or regulatory violations. They're very specifically defined in the code, and that actually ties back to a state law that defines restricted massage establishments. So I won't go through the full list here, but it would be a business that is at a location that has had three or more arrests or citations for prostitution, sex trafficking, or other organized crime, and there's a reference to the exact penal codes that relate there. Also, businesses, massage businesses, that are located at a place where there has been a conviction of these types of crimes, or operates at a location where a prior massage establishment violated Chapter four fifty-five of the Texas Occupations Code, or where the owner of that business violated that code. And that specific section of the Texas Occupations Code regulates massage establishments. I want to be clear that there is a state license required for all massage establishments, and also, all massage therapists have to have a state license. So we have also looked at how we can beef up our efforts in working with the Texas Department of Licensing Regulation, who is in charge of enforcing those state requirements as far as state licenses go. The key provisions of this ordinance, so if this is a massage establishment that has that history of criminal activity, then they will be required to secure a business license from the city. That business license is for a total of a two-year term. It does need to be renewed every two years. And what it does is it allows us to do periodic inspections of the business to ensure that they're complying with that code. If there is a situation where there's criminal activity that is not related to this ordinance, still need to go through the warrant process. So that is not, that is still in place. This just very specifically allows code enforcement, the fire department, the health department, whomever, to go in periodically and inspect the massage establishment. So again, just extra set of eyes on these businesses to ensure they're acting lawfully. In addition, the, in terms, I won't go into too much detail here, but this slide just talks a little bit about the licensing requirements. There's an application process. Ultimately, the city manager designees responsible for reviewing that in consultation with the police department, who will help us do background checks and those kinds of things. Again, the license is valid for two years. There is a provision in this code that allows us to solicit feedback from surrounding property owners to understand whether those property owners have experienced any negative activity as a result of that business being located there. In terms of compliance requirements, if the business is required to get a license, not only do they have to have that license, but they have to post that license at the property. They also are limited to operating between the hours of eight AM and eight PM, so primarily daytime hours, and a number of other things that are just additional regulations that help us, again, ensure that they're acting lawfully. And then finally, and really critically to this whole thing, is the ability to do inspections at that site that we otherwise are not able to do. So this, again, just an extra set of eyes to help ensure that the business is acting in a lawful manner. The license can be terminated. There are provisions to terminate that license. If it is terminated, the business can no longer operate, and so there are provisions to allow for shutting that business down. There is an appeals process, certainly, and then there's a penalties section as well. If it doesn't result in a termination, but there are violations, there are penalties for those violations. Again.
Real quick, Elizabeth, on the, when we're talking about them being able to be revoked, are we revoking the business like the LLC? Or are we revoking the actual owner, so we don't have bad actors that are shutting down a business and then going back and applying for another permit under a different name, or opening up an establishment under our same owner, just different name?
We are, we are only revoking the city license. That is all. We have the authority to revoke. There, there, I'm certain there will be situations where a business shuts down and opens under a different name, but this, again, is tied to the owner. So just like we do, I don't know, when we're doing incentive agreements or those kinds of things, we always research the company. And so that'll have to be part of our process, is researching the company to ensure it's not just the same group of people setting up a new LLC.
You raise a really good question. Gio Varci Mitchell is very appreciative that the mayor and council took this up as an issue and placing it on as an ordinance, because what you say happens often. And so what they do is they track it, and they go about it in different manners, whether it's a financial crime or other ways. They're partnering with TDLR, as a matter of fact, with the work that Attorney General has done with our chief and with the mayor and the council in reaching out. The Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, actually, we were able to get them here through Lindsay that got them here, and we had a meeting, and they also included, Gio included, HSI, which is Homeland Security Investigations. Our codes department was there. And so there's a concerted effort, because of what the mayor talked about in her work with the Attorney General's Office, to really make this a priority by working with all levels of government, the local, state, and federal, because they are going at it in different ways. Human trafficking that's taking place in some of these facilities that you probably well, not that you're well aware of, but y'all probably heard about, and things of that nature. So it's, you raise a really good point, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. And so, the thing that's very different is the ability to go and inspect, as she's already pointed out, and that'll help, not necessarily free up the police department, but it'll give them a force multiplier.
How many violations, I'm sorry, how many violations do they have to have in order to be considered on the so-called naughty list here?
So, a history of three arrests or a history of conviction is basically, in summary, what we're looking for. In talking with the police department, we do have one massage establishment that has a history of three arrests. There are several others that have had not quite three, but.
Is there a statute of limitation on how long we're seeing that, or is it, once they have a violation, they've got a violation, it says on record, it doesn't matter if they've been in business for ten years?
I don't believe there's a statute of limitations. It is tied to the location of the property or tied to the owner.
Well, I think another thing is when we talk, can you go through, the history starts over with this ordinance?
Yes.
Make sure everybody understands that. I think that's really important.
Yes. I want to be clear that this is, once, if this ordinance is enacted, if there are businesses that are considered restricted, we will not force them to come in and get a license now. It's just moving forward. So if the business, so if the business from today or from when this ordinance goes into effect forward gets three arrests or a conviction, then the business license will be required, but we won't retroactively enforce that.
And if the business license is revoked, how is that enforced? Are they forced to shut down? Is that, okay?
Yes, sir.
And TDLR has been, to Tommy's point, they've been part of this conversation, so we're going to have their support. I mean, this is, this is truly something that's not just happening in Midland, but, you know, and I also think it's important for us to discuss, just for the community's awareness, you can go in there and get a regular massage.
Oh, yeah.
And there's, the reason that they're proliferating in our community is because they have clientele that are frequenting them. And I think that what we need to be making the community aware of is that this is a human trafficking concern. It is a money laundering concern. It is tied to organized crime, and there are people being harmed by this. And so we have to find whatever mechanism we can to put this in place and to have enforcement so that we can shut these bad actors down.
You know, TDLR, Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation is so motivated to do something about this. They shared a couple of ordinances with us, one from El Paso and one from Aurora, Colorado. Now, the Aurora, Colorado, and I've already talked to Nicholas and to O about that, but in talking to Nicholas, I told him, I said, it's from another state, so it probably has some things there that we can't do. And because in the state of Texas, there was an overlapping kind of, not a jurisdiction, but it's under the umbrella of a healthcare facility.
Yes.
And so because of that, it has certain rights, and so there's some legislation moving right now at the state level that if appropriate, we could maybe bracket ourselves from that. And Nicholas provided some language that I think he worked with Stephen on to help us with, to then maybe see if that could get introduced in that legislation. Again, we're not doing that legislation. That's happening by itself, but we thought we'd maybe share that bracket and see if it could be acceptable.
Well, and I was going to wait till the end, but I did some kind of side research and spoke with Legal a lot about this. And we were basically, you know, adopting what the state did in twenty-twenty-three, and the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, the TDLR. So I just kind of want to read this real fast, because House Bill thirty-five seventy-nine was passed in the eighty-eighth legislature regular session and went into effect September first, twenty-twenty-three. And under that legislation, TDLR's executive director can issue an emergency order halting the operation of any massage establishment if law enforcement or TDLR believes human trafficking is occurring at that establishment. And I think that's important to note, because you can also file a complaint on a TDLR-regulated business that you suspect may be participating in human trafficking. As of, there have been twenty-one emergency orders issued throughout the state, not one in Midland. So I think that's important to note. So with Legal, I just want backing to understand, I want to make sure the police department has the authority to file a request for investigation to the TDLR. And this is a tool, I mean, this is a hammer that we can use, that if we suspect that, we can go ahead and, I mean, I think council wants to be aggressive on this. We don't want to sit back. We want to keep our community safe. And so with Legal, I just wanted to make sure that I read that correctly, that the PD can use that tool.
Absolutely. Can Nicholas, do you want to expand on that?
Just for a moment. Thank you, members of the city council, mayor. Councilwoman Burks, as to your point, yes, you're absolutely correct. The police department is not only authorized by its very nature of employing peace officers to enforce Chapter twenty A of the Texas Penal Code, but Chapter four fifty-five of the Occupations Code, what we are talking about here today, specifically authorizes peace officers and peace officers that are employed by political subdivisions to enforce that chapter. So yes, you are correct, and we are absolutely authorized to go ahead and take that action.
So if there's that concern, then they can go ahead and file for the investigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And our police department has been working to enforce this and have allocated significant resources to this. So it's not as though we haven't been trying, but we need some of these tools that, like you were referring to, to be able to address it as aggressively as possible.
They have our backing with that.
That's right.
Well, and to capitalize off the public safety comments that Councilwoman Burks made, will the public be made aware of this list? Of the ones that have already been notated within the community, the thirty-seven?
That's.
Will they have access to that?
That's a really good question.
This ordinance does not do that. What this ordinance does is just, if they are required to have a license, they will have to post that license publicly. They'll also have to post signage outside of the business that says they are a restricted massage establishment, so that if you are going in to get a legitimate massage, you're aware of the fact that it has a criminal history.
But do we have the legal right to post that somewhere where it's accessible? I mean, because here's the fact, I mean, you're going to deter business at these places. You may have people that not know, don't know that this is an illicit massage parlor and end up getting a divorce six months later because they were somewhere where they shouldn't have been. And so, is there a way for us to legally do that?
I think, I'll let Legal chime in a bit more on the larger issue, but I think that if they have a license, if they're required to get a license, we can certainly post a list of all of those businesses that have a city license.
The ones that have the license, the thirty-seven that have been identified have been identified by a combination of the Attorney General's Office, the nonprofits that are working on this, and our police department, and I think others have spoken into it. But they're fairly well-known to be bad actors. And so I think if we have a way to post that, or if we have a way to facilitate that being posted by another party, I think we'd like to do that.
I know that when we make arrests and things of that nature, sometimes we send out press releases. Nothing would prohibit us from doing that and/or placing it on a website of some sort, because it's public information. So nothing would prevent us from doing that. So we could do something like that. I think that the real message here is that the mayor's right. The PD has been working on this, but kind of on their own. And what you're seeing now is a concerted effort and a team effort, and then also, not just an internal team, but also working with external partners to make this kind of something that is prioritized for everybody, so that it's a different result, perhaps.
Nicholas, do you, or John, do you want to speak to the leak?
I was going to say, the city manager is correct. In terms of looking to post a list of restricted massage establishments, there would be nothing that prevents the city from doing that. That's certain.
So I think the distinction, though, that we're, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but what I'm wondering here, thirty-seven of them have been identified in our community by these different groups. They have not all met the standard of this ordinance. And so, at what point would we be able to identify the ones that have been presented to us as problematic if they don't meet the standard of this ordinance?
I feel very comfortable in disclosing information as to establishments that do meet the requirements of the ordinance. Before any, before any point in time that we have a restricted establishment, massage establishment that meets the letter of the law, you know, we could discuss that certainly more in the future, but we would really like to keep it to factual, to factual items, such as the city attorney just suggested.
But John, you're saying that that is public record, so if someone were to FOIA that, they could get access to it?
That would be the best way to go about it, is to send us an open records request for those that don't meet the standard at this point.
Okay.
Once they meet the standard, I think we're fine posting it separately.
Once they meet the standard, I think we're fine posting it separately from the notice that's posted at the business.
Well, I think we'd like to invite someone to send us an open records request then, because I think this is, I'm serious.
It's a holistic approach to get it out there.
And Midlanders deserve to know.
Agreed.
You know, if if we know that we're working on this and we're working with other agencies, it's been identified, I mean, we're partnering with Odessa on this to to try to keep them from moving back and forth between our communities. So please, someone do that.
And and if someone, whoever wants to do that, they're welcome to contact our office, and we can help them understand the process and maybe tailor it to make sure they get the information they're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Uh, we saying 37. How many massage places do we have in? Because that's a lot of-
Chief, would, do you have any information?
If I could just add a little perspective so that they're all going to be on the same page. Councilman, I don't have uh the exact number right now, but if I could just kind of take a a moment to tell us historically about what happens. The police, we get together, we, you guys have heard me brag many times, we have great relationships with the other agencies in our area. Sergeant Gio Varsi Mitchell is embedded with the HSI. He works with the DEA. He works with DPS to go and run criminal operations on some of these parlors. The problem is, they're so well-known, that there were a couple of them that had a picture of Gio inside, so that they know what to look for. And so a lot of this information that we're getting from these uh nonprofit organizations are things that they're going on a website, and what they're doing is they're getting this information because a customer's going in and leaving a review. Well, that's how they're being identified as doing that, but that's different than for me, to be able to go in and get probable cause and put them in jail.
Right.
So what we're doing is we're in the process of evolving our response. We are now not only focused, as the Midland Police Department, on developing our relationships with the, our friends that wear badges, but also with Alicia Crowley, like with the Attorney General's Office that you introduced me to, and with our, with the TDLR. And so we're, what we're doing is we're going to make a bigger concerted effort, where we're pulling in parts from a bunch of different agencies, whether they wear badges or not, so that we can have a more holistic approach to this. So we might have some some parlors that are identified, but getting us inside to get the probable cause to take that enforcement action is not just necessarily an A plus B equals C type of venture. So we're in the process of evolving, because trust me, we want to put these illegal businesses down, too. I hope that perspective helps you. Is there any questions that maybe I could answer? What's that, sir?
Said bring down the hammer.
Yes, sir.
And if we can get regular updates on the complaints that are filed, that'd be good as well.
Yep.
Sure.
I was just going to ask, is making this kind of more public that we're doing it, is that going to make your job harder? Are they going to be more hidden, more more defensive? I don't know what the right word is, but-
Maybe yes and maybe no, but I think if everybody knows what's going on, because most Midlanders think Midland is a great city, and it is a great city. But what I mean by that is they don't think there's like rampant crime. If you're a person that doesn't go to these type of business for illicit means, that's not something that you're normally going to think about, right? So I think if we talk about this more and people know, well, maybe hey, at least a little shame will come into somebody's game.
Yep.
Right? And that's just my personal opinion.
I suggest y'all go to the mall and nobody can see you.
Sit in the middle of the mall?
In the middle of the mall, too. Normally don't let no dudes give me no massage, but they go deep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just it's helpful to answer the the question about how many, um you can look online at TDLR and it just by account, it looks like there's 50 current licenses um for massage establishments.
So 37 out of 50?
It's ridiculous.
Golly.
So, okay. Well, with that, unless there is any other discussion, I'll look for action from council. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, let's vote.
Maybe just don't get them.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, item number 23 is we're going to receive public comments where individuals may address the city council on city-related issues and projects not on the present agenda. Any deliberation of or decision by the city council regarding the item being discussed shall be limited to a motion to place the item on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. And we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move into executive session, item 24 pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551101. The city council will hold an executive session, which is closed to the public, to discuss the following matters, as permitted under the following sections of the Texas Government Code. Section 551071, consultation with attorney, will discuss matters in which the duty of the attorneys to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code.